I want to thank you. You're giving some tickets out on power and vintage.
Okay, we are live.
All right, everybody. I'm using my coffee cup as the gavel. We're calling the meeting of September 18th. Any special intentions? Yes, sir. Councilman Segura.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to call attention to the family of Asahak Patel, a owner and manager of the Radisson Hotel here in the city of Kenner District two for many, many, many years. Unfortunately, due to some unfortunate untimely events, he passed away. So for his family's sake, I want to make sure we put him in our prayers to let him know, let them know that we respect and are thankful for the time and the goodwill that he put here in our city. So he will be missed. Thank you.
Councilman Womack, did you have your hand up?
Yes, Council President, I did. I had the same special intention as Councilman Segura, and I asked also that you keep the Patel family in your prayers. Thank you.
Tragic story. Anybody? Councilman Carroll?
Unmute.
Unmute.
Thank you, Councilman Branigan. I asked for our prayers for the two deputies that were shot. And I believe they are doing much better now, maybe coming from the hospital. And I forget the state, but the reality is they were ambushed and shot while sitting in their car, I believe. So we want to keep them in our prayers also.
Yeah, I think one has been released from the hospital. So that's good news. Any other special intentions? Mr. Rapier, would you lead us?
Let us pray. God of all of us, we thank you for giving us another day. Bless the members of the City Council for our great city gathered here for this council meeting. Inspire them with wisdom as they address the needs of our city in such a difficult period of our shared history. Continue to bless those who labor to attend to the sick among our citizens and those also who strive to find effective treatments and vaccines. Keep us all safe in your divine mercy. May all that is done this day be for your greater honor and glory. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Councilman Segura, lead us in the pledge, please.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for everybody's information, we are going to again still have voting by roll call today. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You have a quorum. Is there any resolutions, motions, and other items from the floor? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of September 3rd, 2020. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. We have none. Item four is correspondence reports from the mayor, CEO, or department heads. Item four A, at the request of the administration, a report from Mayor's on.
Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. A few things today, and it might turn out that the council meeting is not quite as long as the mayor's comments because we're going to have three different speakers within these, but I want to go over two things before we get to those speakers. Council meetings, we're doing two new things coming up within the next couple of weeks. First, we'll talk about council meetings. We appear to be moving in a positive direction. That's good news. The numbers appear to be moving those directions. Based upon that, as you know, as the public knows, if they're, if they saw the press release this past week, we have a potential council meeting set at the Poncharine Center in person for October 1st. That would be the next council meeting on Thursday evening at 5:30. That is with everything continuing to go in this direction that we're going in. I, for one, think that these Zoom meetings have worked. I believe that it's, it's, it's gotten the city's business done. Y'all have gotten y'all's work done. We've gotten our work done. However, there is a need to go back to a public in-person council meeting. The long-term goal is absolutely positively to return to the council chambers. Most of you all have viewed the council chambers with my CEO, Deborah Foshee, and most of you all know and understand, and I appreciate your support, that that is not a possibility right now because of the size of the room and the standards put out by and limitations put out by the governor. We cannot do it in our own council chambers. My biggest problem with it, besides all the things that had to be set up, is the limitation and how we have to limit the public. I will not limit the public to six people attending a council meeting. I'm not saying that more than six people from the public usually attend, but I don't know if an issue would pop up and I would have to be the one limiting the public. That's why I've been very, very pro Zoom because Zoom, it's almost limitless. We don't have to limit the public. At the Poncharine Center, I don't think we're going to have more than probably, I think the number was 50 or 60 members that the public could come in, plus there's waiting rooms to put other members of the public that we can alternate in and out. So I don't think we'd have that problem or foresee that problem at the, at the Poncharine Center for a council meeting. I'm going to call on Doug Dope in just a minute to give particulars on the numbers and how we're being affected here in the city of Kenner, what's going on in the state. But before I do that, I talked about two things, returning back to normal. One was the council meeting somewhat normal, being at law, but not in the council chambers. The other thing is really good news. The opening of Lake Town. My deputy CEO, Chad Pittfield, has worked with an independent contractor that's going in this weekend to clean up Lake Town. They're going to clean it up. It's going to take about five to seven days to get that cleaned up. When they are finished by next weekend, without a storm coming this week, and we're monitoring that also, the EOC is. But with everything staying as is, like it is right now, with five to seven days in Lake Town cleaning it up, Lake Town will be open next weekend. And when I say open, I mean open completely. You'll be able to, first question we've gotten, first comments we always get is that I have to, you know, launch my boat and go park someplace else. When we say Lake Town's open, that means you can launch it and go park in the, in the parking lot of Lake Town. We're going to have enough employees back. We're going to have our people back. Getting it cleaned up is really important. The fishing pier will be open. Everything in Lake Town will be open. That is good news. As you see, the city of Kenner is slowly putting some things back in place. Where we haven't missed a beat with providing services, police, fire, public works, all those things. We're still getting back to where the law or interactive things are happening in the city of Kenner. So if everybody would just have a little patience and continue, continue that cooperation, we'll be able to get through all these things within the next couple of months with these numbers staying where they are and making sure that we keep our residents safe. With that, I'm going to call on Doug Dope to give a few comments on what's going on out there. And I want to thank Doug and Heather and all the EOC and everyone for the work they've done with, you know, potentially getting hit by Laura, potentially getting hit by Sally. Look, without the EOC and without the other departments, you know, we wouldn't be prepared for these things. So I want to thank everyone who was involved in that. And then it'll come back to me, Council President, and we'll talk about break tags and economic development. Doug Dope.
Morning, council members. Just to give a very brief outline of what's going on in the city of Kenner as far as COVID goes, we've been tracking, obviously tracking the numbers here locally through the state and the parish reports. And we're glad to say that we're starting to see a slight flattening of the, of the numbers here in Kenner as well as in Jefferson Parish. So as of yesterday, because the numbers haven't been released today for Jefferson Parish, but as of yesterday, yesterday they had, I believe it was 18 cases and the last reported death in Jefferson Parish was on the 16th. So the numbers are obviously coming down on the parish level as well as the city level. So as the mayor said, we're, we're optimistic that we can start moving forward and, and start, you know, loosening some of the restrictions that we have with the guidance from the CDC and the Louisiana Department of Health, which still indicates that we should be wearing our mask and socially distancing and taking all those other activities. We also closely monitor what's going on on the national level with the Department of Homeland Security and start looking at those, their recommendations as well as the fire marshals. So we're gathering all that data and putting that information and considering those activities both in our facilities as well as within the community. So with that, if there's no specific questions, I think that's a report on the, on COVID. As far as the tropical depression, there is a tropical depression out there in the Southwest Gulf. And the latest information we have is that we'll start to move in the north, northerly direction sometime this weekend. Although it's not anticipated to impact us for at least another five days or so. Well, the coastal areas of the state may see some, some increased rain and wind, but we should not be seeing anything here within the next five days or so. But we'll be closely monitoring that and keep you updated as to any change in that storm. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer. Thank you.
So break tags is another thing, as we're talking about things that are opening or going back to somewhat some type of normalcy. There's something we've been working on for a long time. I want to thank the council again for this support. It has taken 28 days for it to get to you, got to you about two council meetings ago. Appreciate your support and changing that. It has taken code a while to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed because when you do something like this, you want to make sure it's done right. I'm not going to say that that could be some hiccups and some issues when we implement this. But the good news is Molly McGinnis, James Mohammed, and also with the help of our, kind of like our Swiss Army knife, Jimmy Dennis, we've been able to also do a few things with him, with some of the connections and people that he knows out there that are interested in doing this. I want to thank them. I want to thank everyone who's been involved in this. The list is long, I know that, but those three are the ones that come to mind. The good news is Molly's here to give you a report on it. She's going to go into some of the particulars, but I'm going to steal a little bit of the thunder and say by next Friday, the implementation and the distribution will be ready for next Friday. Not at every location, but at least maybe four locations, three locations. Molly's going to talk about that. Hopefully it's six. I appreciate what's been done on this. Again, I appreciate the council's support, and I know Molly knows a lot more than me. Molly?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. As the mayor said, we're pleased to announce that next Friday, we expect to be up and running. I believe at all six of the locations that we've already inspected and are underway getting ready. I wanted to thank as well, as the mayor did, Jimmy Dennis, James Mohammed, Mark Glorioso. The men from the break tag station have been fabulous. We will have six stations, I believe, that will be ready to open on Friday. There's one on North Williams Boulevard, two at the South End of Williams Boulevard, one on Airline Highway, and two in the industrial area of Bainbridge right off of Veterans. I think that gives us good coverage and should take care of the citizens very well. And we appreciate everyone's patience with this, but we did want to do it right and make sure that the citizens got good service and got what they deserve, you know, and had the services that, the standards that, that we like to keep. If you have any questions, let me know. I know, I'm sure the mayor will be putting out some kind of press release or whatever next week with the exact locations. But we're, we'll be ready to go. This will be great.
Flat out, I think Councilman Segura has his hand up.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Well, again, this is a, thank you, Molly, for the work you've done to get this started. You know, obviously, I'm sure my other colleagues are getting calls on it, just like I have. So we're anxious to have it back up and running. Just to be clear, though, Mayor Molly and Police Chief, even though we're up and running next Friday, there's still going to be, what, a 45-day delay before we start issuing tickets for expired?
Molly, what was the time limit we discussed on that?
Forty-five days from opening that we will not charge any late fees, and it's pretty much an amnesty period. So even if they're, because we're not going to make people try to figure out if they expired last December and should have had one. So anyone who's, who's past due can get it without their late fees. For the next 45 days.
Police issuing.
That's late. I, I can't speak to enforcement. I'm not going to pretend to be the police chief. I'll defer to him.
Top row, so that's why I'm going from Ben, you, and Chief. So is there some arrangement, Chief, that says there's a delay in issuing tickets?
Yes. As we stated in the past, I think in council meetings and made public that enforcement will begin 45 days once it's, they're available to the public. So 45 days from next Friday, wherever that, that date comes up, you know, we'll, and we'll put the stuff out to let the people know that, you know, the break tags are up and running. Our enforcement will, will begin on the date that I calculated.
Good. Thank you.
Councilman Womack?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Molly, I just had a question. And first off, thank you as well for all y'all's hard work at getting this going. I think it's going to be a great improvement for the city. But I do, do wonder, you have six applicants at this point, look like they're going to be approved by next Friday. Are there more in the hopper, so to speak, so that they're going to be opening even more than six?
Yes, sir. We have more applications than that. These are the first six that we got, and we thought they were in the best locations to serve the citizens, had the most space and could give the best service. And they were the most active in, in, in trying to be a station. They were very interested from the beginning and are looking forward to doing anything they, they can to help us catch up on this backlog and then continue to serve the citizens. And they're all longtime Kenner businesses, which makes me very happy. Nothing's a chain thing. Everything's a Kenner hometown business. So we'll be helping our own businesses bring in more business, and I think that's a benefit as well.
Do you have any expectations as to how many that might be open, say, next year?
Um, you know, that's going to depend. It, you know, how many more apply? I have a total of 11 applications as of today, but they're coming in daily. So it, it could be more, and then I suppose after the backlog is taken care of, it may depend on, you know, supply and demand. They may feel, you know, some may, some more may want to do it, and then some more may not want to because it may not be enough. That's, 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 I can't predict that. That's, I guess, you know, commerce.
I was just wondering if we had more coming, so that, that answers.
More coming. We have more in line and coming. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Councilmember McKinney?
Thank you, Council President. Molly, thank you much. Thank you so much for all of your work you've done to, for this transition and encouraging, you know, businesses to get involved. I just have a quick question. So just to clarify, the opening of, so the hours of the business, the businesses, it's all the, there's going to be more flexibility in terms of when, with the timing of it. Are they going to have, are some of these businesses open on weekends and available, you know, throughout the week? I just want to clarify that because I think that, to me, that's a major point, that it's going to be a lot more convenient in terms of timing as well. So if you can.
Yes, absolutely. A lot of these businesses are open earlier in the morning. Some of them are open on Saturdays, and that's every Saturday, not just one Saturday a month, which is what we were doing. And there's at least one business that's open seven days a week. And so that will benefit a lot of people who maybe work a weird work schedule or whatever. I think this is going to make it a lot easier on our citizens to be able to get their break tag and renew it every time. They'll, they'll have a lot more hours that they can go do that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just have a couple of comments as it relates to the mayor's presentation. Excuse me, first on the COVID-19 and second on the break tag. For the COVID-19, it's good to hear, first of all, that Jefferson Parish, along with the state, is going in a downward direction. I think that's overall, that is fantastic. It's good to know that the mayor has said we went, we have gone from a two to a three, a soft three, mind you, but still a three. And to some people, the three may be a little bit more restrictive than the two, than the hard two. But that's neither here or there. I'd like to thank Ms. Foshee and the Assistant Director of General Services for walking through with me for our council chambers because obviously, as I've been clear, I believe that is where the people's government should take place. We're going to the Poncharine Center between that and the Zoom. I really, you know, really that, not that much difference between the two, in my opinion, until we get back to the, to the council chambers. So looking at it, going through it, looking at all the challenges we had in there, it was good to be able to see that for me because I like, like to see things. But I want to say that hopefully the trend continued to go down. We go to the Poncharine Center, we'll be able to get a feel for the numbers, how things are going. But I would be the first to support, if the numbers start going up, would be the first and will be the first to support coming back to Zoom. So we want to move there, but let's just not forget that it's possible. And I hope that doesn't happen, that we may have to. So I just want everybody to, to keep that in their mind. We're going in the right direction, I believe, doing some things, ultimately get back to the council. But if by chance we look at a peak, a climb, then we have to do what's, what's best for the city. Second thing is, as far as the break tag, it's good to thank everybody's support. Look forward for that opening up. I, I'm going to have some conversations with our, with my fellow colleagues and with the administration about different things that I've been receiving from many of the constituents. So before I mention anything more on that, I want to have that first so we can talk about it as we move forward. But thanks again for everybody's support, and we're all looking forward to that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Branigan?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say that I'm really happy that we're going to have these break tag outlets throughout the city, north, middle, and south. And I think that hopefully they realize that the first month or so, they're going to get slammed pretty good. And then it's going to kind of teeter off, I would think, and go into the regular cycle. Also, with the council meetings, these Zoom meetings, as Council President, I was the first one to have to deal with Zoom meetings. And basically, I believe that this has worked really well to be able to get the information needed out to the residents of the city of Kenner. And I agree with Councilman Carroll that, you know, it's nice to move in this direction, but if there's any type of situation where we move backwards, then I don't think it's a bad deal to go back to Zoom because it has been an effective way for us to communicate with the residents of the city of Kenner. That's it.
Mayor?
So next will be Candace Watkins with Economic Development. I'm going to let Candace deal with this because that's why I brought Candace in to deal with economic development and her team that she's put together that works very closely with her has done a fantastic job. We're going to talk about, we had this scheduled for her to come on because, as you know, last council meeting, you had her on a first reading, which is now on 15B for you all to approve a contract with Tunnel Spangler to do some studies, which are, and she's going to talk about it, which are grant funded. Anytime we can put grant in front of funding, I think that's always a good thing for the city of Kenner when our checkbook is kind of tight right now. We don't have a lot of money in the checkbook. So I want to thank her for doing this, but, you know, this will be one of the few times you hear from Candace until Candace has something to bring you that's on a public agenda. And that's not to keep it from the public, but I guess it's to keep it from the public, to make sure that the public doesn't know outside of our residents of the city of Kenner, there's another public. There's a public that might want to steal what Candace is doing. So it's stupid for anyone to ever say, I want a report on economic development. You guys get reports on economic development whenever you text me, call me, whatever's going on. But just think about your political campaign. When you're out there running, you've got your opponent, and you don't want your opponent to know your business in your campaign because you're in a race. Well, economic development guys and to the members of the, of the public and also our Kenner residents, economic development is like a political campaign. We want to make sure that we keep the person that we're courting. We want to make sure we keep that person here in the city of Kenner. Nothing against our parish, nothing against the city of New Orleans, nothing against our brother and sister cities. But you know what? It's Kenner first. So I don't want anybody taking something we're working on. Not to mention, this administration, me, my CEO, my deputy CEOs, have to remain very silent when we're working with a company that's coming here. When Candace has brought them, she's got to work very quiet with those people when she's trying to bring them here because they have clauses in there. They don't want you talking about it. They don't want you talking about what they're doing in your city. You could lose it. So if anybody thinks that we're going to continue to do these economic development updates, you're wrong. We're not going to do that. We're going to give you an update here when you need it between you and I, or we're going to do this at a council meeting when it's on a public agenda. With that said, I hope I have your support on that because that's the way it's going to be. But keeping it that way is most important for our residents first because it gives them more opportunities as economic development comes in. I want to thank Candace Watkins for what she's done. She works very hard at economic development. This is what she's skilled in, in which she's bringing, what you're going to hear about, the two things that she has to talk about. And again, the second thing she talks about, she's just going to talk about one little part of it because I don't want to screw that up. I don't want her to screw it up, and she's not going to do that, and I'm not going to do it. So the two things she's going to talk about are two things that I've been working on, she's been working on, this administration, and some of you all have been working on. So I thank everybody that's involved. Candace?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm happy to be with you guys today, and I'm actually excited. I don't feel like I'm being called on the carpet at all, but because we have a lot of good things going on. And that's possibly one of the hardest parts of my job is that when we get excited about something that we, we will be able to brag about, it's hard to keep it confidential, but private business is private business. And so that's where public information and private business sort of cross, cross lines. And so we're certainly not trying to be secretive other than the confidentiality that we have to maintain for the people that we're working with. So I appreciate your comments, Marizon. And for, you know, just for the general public, the quick report card, and there is no quick report card, and this is not up to one person at all. Everyone on this, on this Zoom this morning is part of this. It's a team effort. It's between economic development, planning and zoning, code enforcement, our cultural diversity coordinator. All these people work together to do these things. But just for, for information's sake, city of Kenner has issued 106 new business licenses since January in spite of everything that's going on. And we've renewed 1,976. And in the world of economic development in business improvement and retention, retention is the most important because a business in the hand is worth many in the bush. So that being said, we have some exciting news. And one piece of business, Marizon, that I'm going to insinuate, insert here because Treasurer John Schroeder has asked us to share this information, and this is a really great opportunity, there have been changes as of last Friday to the Louisiana Main Street Recovery Program. That is not the Main Street Historic Preservation Economic Development Program. This is a separate federally funded aid, COVID aid program that small businesses can apply for up to $15,000. Previously, the quick recovery, the quick relief option was limited to people who had received less than $1,000 of federal aid already. That stipulation has been taken off. The quick relief option where all you have to do is download your 19 tax returns, not itemize all your expenses and go through all of that, the limit was 5,000. That's been increased to 15,000. So the message here is for anyone who was denied an award under this program should apply again. Anyone who has an application pending will be renewed under the new rules. And if you haven't applied at all because you thought it was too much trouble or you And if you haven't applied at all because you thought it was too much trouble or you weren't going to qualify, apply. You will find all the information at LouisianaMainStreet.com. And that's John Treasurer John Schroeder's um group is administering that program. And trust me, um I directed someone to the program in the city of Kenner that I really wasn't sure she had a shot at all and she got the full fifteen thousand dollars. So and was very excited and grateful, Marzon, that you gave me that phone call. So those, that's good news for the people here in Kenner. The second quick thing, it's um equally, it it's very exciting. Um in the past, we have hoped for development in Lake Town. Uh the city has issued requests for proposal in the past. We had not gotten um what the city was looking for up until this most recent round. Uh primarily, there there are lots of challenges in Lake Town. The topography is difficult. Um the fact that it's state land that has to be leased through the state, all these things, lots of challenges to development in Lake Town. Um so when we did not receive proposals in our earlier requests this year, we uh went to Representative Debbie Bilio, who also enlisted the support of Representative Joe Stagni and Senator Smith and passed legislation to enable the state to lease the property for up to ninety-nine years. All state leases are um done by law. And so for the city of Kenner to give up its recreational lease that had a fifty-year limit and allow the state to lease to any private entity required legislation. And you know, those things don't happen easily. Well, remarkably, our legislation passed without opposition. That's that's pretty spectacular. So the Louisiana Legislature is excited about the possibility that we may be able to get a significant development at Lake Town. So we reissued the RFP. We have a proposal. And at first glance, it's a very exciting um proposal. And we are now evaluating it and we will make sure that it responded to all the the pieces, parts of of the request, that it meets our economic development goals and that um it's appropriate to the site and does all the things that the city is hoping for. And let me remind you that the city did another study, the Lake Town Study in twenty eighteen, which addressed all of these things. This is not something that suddenly happened. We didn't just wake up one day and say we want to put out an RFP for development Lake Town. There was um a study done um CBRE outlining what they felt were the highest and best uses and all those things for uh development of Lake Town. And that's where um we, the recommendation came from for us to go forward with this process. So we um again, we're evaluating that proposal and we hope to um, you know, share some some more news about it soon. Now, we have guests this morning. It's been months and I went back to see when exactly you the council blessed the grant that we received from the Louisiana Office of Community Development Disaster Recovery Unit for the two economic development planning projects. One for the Esplanade Mall, one for the uh Rivertown Main Street area. And we have, uh we subsequently issued a request for proposals after we accepted and signed the CEA with Jefferson Parish to add this uh project to our list of Katrina Rita projects. Believe it or not, we're still working on Katrina Rita projects. And we put out a request for proposals. We got twenty-one proposals. And that's a lot of proposals. And this is community development block rent money, which is highly regulated. And there it's very um strict about how you go about procuring consultants, et cetera, et cetera. So now we're to that point. And now um once this contract is signed, but with again with your approval, we will move forward to the fun part, which is getting the public together, talking to you all, talking to the neighbors, gathering the information that we need for the leadership and public in the city of Kenner to tell us what they would like to see happen at at both of these sites. These are extremely valuable assets that we have. When people drive by the Esplanade Mall, they might think it looks um the, you know, it they might get a negative impression, but it's actually, you know, I'm in my world, it's a great opportunity. So that's what we're gonna do. We um we have guests with us this afternoon or this morning. We have Tom Walsh, Sarah McCully and our own Linda Nugent-Smith, who is on their team uh with TSW Architects, Planners, Landscape Architects. I'm gonna going to let them tell you more about themselves, uh which probably just need to know about Tom is that he's an LSU graduate. So there you go. He he had the, he had the the job in the bag from the beginning. But now, this this was a painstaking process. And um I I think I'm very excited that I think we've chosen a consultant who is very appropriate for Kenner. So with that, Adam, are Tom and Sarah and Linda on the Zoom and can um speak?
They are, they are here and they can speak.
Okay, Tom.
Hi, um can you all hear me?
We can.
Good. I I am Tom Walsh with TSW, uh uh one of the founding principals. And Sarah McCully is somewhere on your screen and Linda uh Nugent-Smith is is also on the screen. Um I'm from originally from Maryland, grew up in Washington DC area, but went to, got a degree at Southeastern University uh in Hammond and also LSU. So I have uh somehow I have this love affair with Louisiana and uh love being down there. And we are very, very excited about uh being on your uh your project. I I just want to say that there's there's two distinct projects, uh which is the the Rivertown and and the Esplanade Mall. Uh but one of the things that is common to both of them is that you have to have a collaborative group of people. And we and we are, our firm is known for collaborating, really duck taking deep dives in with the community. One of the things I always say to every community is that you all live there and you all know what you need and what 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 you want. Our job is to take your vision and create that vision and make it work. And so that's what we uh anticipate doing. Um you know, COVID is a of of is gonna be with us probably for a while. We hope to get over there. But if we do, we want to follow up, obviously, the CDC guidelines. Uh but we we do feel it's important to be on the ground at some point uh sooner than later and somehow work out the protocols so we can meet with some or all of you at some point, just to talk to you and get your feedback as well, as well as uh uh talking with the community. Let me just go over the team real fast and then I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah for a second. Um Sarah McCully is gonna be the project manager. She is a highly organized and will keep this thing moving uh very efficiently. Also, I have Laura Richter, who was an architect in our firm, and she will be basically assigned to the Esplanade Mall Mall. We're gonna look at the mall, I think, in three different ways. One, keeping it exactly it is, but what happens on the outside. One is a modified plan to it and one is if it wasn't there, you know, look at different approaches to how that mall might uh and that land be used. It's strategically located. It's a gray site. There's lots of traffic. It 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 can do very well with uh with lots of different input. We also have two economic consultants on our team. I we felt that were very important. One is um of Noel Consulting and David Lowby will head that up. Uh and he'll look at a spectrum of housing, commercial, retail and office uh uh aspects of this. And then we have Randy Gibbs, who was it, is really gonna be focused again on the Esplanade Mall. We we felt the Esplanade Mall is a very important piece of this. So we've assigned two people specifically to do those those tasks. I'll, my focus will be on both, but I'm really excited about the Rivertown uh piece of this. The Rivertown has so much uh possibilities uh to it. I I I actually flew over one day and Linda drove me around. And when I got to the uh got to Rivertown, I just, I couldn't wait to hopefully get selected and get on on the project. It is a great area. But what I want to do is have uh ask Sarah to spend a couple minutes talking about how we're gonna um involve you as the community and and we're gonna do it obviously two ways, even if there wasn't COVID. We've been learning so much about virtual uh connections. And we actually have given national talks on it. We we were asked to give a national talk at a conference. So we feel we've become pretty good at that. So Sarah, if you'll give us a quick overview.
Hi, everyone. Um as Tom said, I'm Sarah McCully, project manager on this. Um thank you for allowing us to be on this call and we're really excited to get going on this project. Um as Tom mentioned, you know, these are two very distinct areas, but there are some shared common goals about um connecting to the neighborhoods around it, making sure that we identify key economic development um projects and making sure all of that works within a cohesive plan that uh the community comes up with. So um we will create an overall um public engagement strategy that will work both in person and virtually so that we have a game plan depending on where we are and where, you know, COVID numbers are. We we have a place that we can go and we know what we're gonna do for each meeting and each touch point. Um as Tom mentioned, we have done a lot of virtual engagement in the last six months. We've learned a lot of lessons. We've learned how to simplify. We've learned what works best. Um we have recently been working with this online engagement portal called Social Pinpoint that is the easiest and most flexible. And the good thing about this one is that we can have this open throughout the duration of the project. So even if we can't be there in person, we have a way to get feedback. Um and that can go on all the way through uh the entire process. We also really want to make sure that we are meeting with the Main Street Board, the Economic Development Board and council at key touch points throughout uh the engagement process to make sure we're on the right track and we're taking the right information to the public. And we will have a final document um at the end that will be cohesive and overarching for everything. But we also will make it flexible um for use. Um so each site will have a separate document that can be pulled out and used for uh marketing purposes or whatever you need so that it's um easier to to use for whatever your needs are being. So that's kind of the rundown of how it'll look. We're looking at a nine-month process at the moment, just a cursory view. But uh that can be changed and flexible based on the needs of City of Kenner.
So I we really thank you. We're very excited and look forward to working with you. Our secret weapon is gonna be Linda because one of the things I really wanted to do was have someone uh on the ground uh in in Louisiana that can keep us appraised. So um uh she will always be available and if 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 uh if any of you know her and you have an issue, please get in touch with her. She'll get in touch with us uh immediately. But um we're looking forward to uh also working with Linda as well. So again, thank you so much and we'll we're certainly be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tom and Sarah. And let me say that I'd like our first, our very first meeting to be with the two district council members uh who represent both of these sites because it's it's high time to uh get them involved in the process. They're gonna be critical to to what goes.
We agree.
Councilman Brennigan.
Uh Tom, I just want to tell you that by picking Linda, you did a good thing. She's a, she's an incredible person in our area and she knows the city and this area very well.
Yeah, it's it's always great to have a Realtor that knows the the pulse of the community. So you're right. Thank you.
You, she is, she is that, definitely.
Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank uh Tom and Ms. Watkins for their presentation. Uh and also, Tom, thank you for the love for uh that you shared about Rivertown. I'm not gonna say I'm from Rivertown, but just still thank you for the love for the for those comments. But uh also commenting on uh Ms. Watkins and the mayor's comments about the information presented uh at our meetings, I never really thought about, to be honest, the other part of it about giving up information that may come back to hurt us or take away from us. I never thought about that, but that that makes sense. Uh but I I do believe that uh we have, I have not done a great job communicating with Ms. Watkins or getting information from an economic development standpoint. I could use the excuse of COVID, which is not an excuse, but I believe those are bigger things on our plate. And uh, you know, lives always trumps uh money, in my in my opinion. So we look forward to having those conversations and to be able to ensure that we are not letting information out that are, as the mayor said, that we shouldn't be. But it's important to be able to maintain that communication with Ms. Watkins and the administration that we, as councilmen, get the information. Most of all, to be able to know and and to be able to share with our community, but also to know exactly how to frame it when we do, not just to spew things out that we should not do it. So that is as as important as knowing, knowing how do we frame that with our constituents and everybody around the city. You know, obviously Rivertown and Lake Town are our, you know, highlighted areas for whatever reason it is. But uh to be able to talk to people from all over is important. So I look forward to that conversation with Ms. Watkins from the administration to get in the information and to sharing it with our community uh to let them know for that, so they don't feel that, you know, they're kept in the dark and and not knowing what's going on. So I look forward to for that conversation. Thanks again, Ms. Watkins. Thank you, Tom. Uh thank the administration. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Segura.
Oh, uh thank you, Council President. Uh Tom and Sarah, I want to welcome y'all. Um haven't had a chance to meet you yet, but I'm sure I will. My district touches both uh the Lake Town and the Esplanade Mall, Rivertown and the Esplanade Mall. So you gotta kind of go through me to get to y'all. So I do look forward to uh helping out with your uh due diligence and working through this. And Tom, uh as Councilman Brennigan said, bringing Linda on is a big asset. Her knowledge of economic development, I can attest, she was my landlord for many years in a business and she did good. So welcome y'all and look forward to working with uh this project and helping the city out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Wilmot.
Thank you, Council President. And I too uh appreciate um uh all that you've done and all that you intend on doing. And and Candace, thank you very much for your leadership on this and and uh welcome aboard, Tom and Sarah. And and of course, Linda, Linda, uh she's she's well-known in this region and she she's uh has the capability to putting this thing together. So good selection. And and I wanted to say too that the at larges, we would like to chime in on some of this. And if you can't keep us in the loop, I do have some information I wish to share sooner rather than later. So if you will reach out to me, I appreciate it.
Well, we will, we will definitely keep everyone in the loop. We are obsessed with that. We we really do want to get as much input as possible.
Thank you, Tom.
Anybody else?
Well, just.
McKenney.
Oh, go ahead. Yes, thank you. Um thank you, Candace, and thank you. Welcome, Tom and Sarah as well, as well as Linda. I'm also looking forward to working with you guys um as an at-large councilperson. You know, both of those areas are in, obviously in the city. So I definitely want to have um be in the loop. And I think I have some valuable inputs. Um I've worked on economic development projects as um in my background. So the development of federal city. Um so I would greatly like to assist with this. Um I I guess uh one of my only concerns and um is that uh anything that we do um obviously is gonna be, has to have that COVID, um the economic impact of COVID, which is obviously gonna be prolonged because we don't know how long this is gonna gonna last. So um those development opportunities, how, and you know, we can, you don't have to answer this now. But um in terms of that, um that impact, that long-term impact, um you know, if we were doing this six months ago or, you know, eight months ago, it obviously we would have a different result, right? So I just want to um, you know, have that, uh talk about that and just have, get your thoughts on how that is gonna have a different impact and how um and how important that is. So thank you.
Yeah, let let me just say one thing. Fortunately, and if if there's any silver lining in COVID, which I don't think there is, but if there was, it's the fact that we now are seeing a lot of of retail commercial uh um that are are actually having to readjust significantly. And it will not be the same world on the other side of this uh COVID. So um we're doing, Sarah and I are working on a major project here in the Atlanta metro area. And it's giving us valuable information that is probably uh would be used nationally on how retail, commercial, mixed-use developments will look and and start to feel in the future. So we will want to definitely share that with you and and we look forward to getting information from you. If we've worked on, you know, the development, we we love working with anyone that has that kind of uh resource.
I just, I want to say this before Candace um wraps it up. Um look, this this group was chosen by committee. Um I sat in on um committee that Candace had. I sat in on, um, committee that Candace had put together. I sat in on all the, I think the finalists on Candace, wasn't the finalist before us?
The top four.
I thanked every group that came before us. I probably said a few more comments when this group came before us. Still letting the, letting the committee make their choice, let the committee do it. But just like you all, y'all's reaction right now with the presentation by Tom and also by Sarah and having the local contact, of course, our good friend Linda Nugent Smith. I was probably a little more vocal in that part and I look very, very forward to, and I want to thank the committee for making this choice. I look very, very forward to working very closely with all three of y'all, all your team. I, I mean, I'm, you had other team members on that Zoom that day. So look, our city's open. Come over here, come help us out and we just totally appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thanks.
Councilman Brennan, did you have your hand up?
Okay. Adam, would you tell Glenn, Glenn Matt, just, I just wanted to thank everyone again. Uh, thank you guys for being on with us this morning. I need to go, go back and thank Senator Talbot for also helping us with our Lake Town legislation. And to tell, uh, the council that there, there will be more interaction with me than you were ever hoping for. So we have, and we were right on the verge of really opening up communications when COVID hit. So it's these kinds of opportunities that we, we don't just want you to be involved. We need you to be involved. So this will be hopefully fun for everyone because it's exciting to, to think that we're going to end up with some real action items that we can implement and, and bring new life back to these two extraordinary places. So thank you everyone so much and for your consideration later on the agenda to the council members. Thank you.
Ms. Watkins, thank you very much. And Tom, you obviously, you're on-ground person, has a fan club here. So you made a great choice there.
Thank you.
Mayor, is that the end of your report?
It, it is, but as something popped up in the, in the middle of this with economic development, uh, I want to thank Candace for the economic development presentation. I think it was very good. The, the comments about Senator Talbot, yes, Debbie Vilio, absolutely thank her on the state repside in the legislature, but thank Senator Talbot on the senate side because it took both of them to get it done, both of them working together. I appreciate them. And of course, everyone in the legislature in the sen, in the senate that votes, that voted for it are two other ones, Joe Stagni and Gary Smith. With that said, Deborah had texted me that there was an add-in that dealing with economic development, Doug Dote had a comment on Deborah. Is that correct?
Deborah, unmute.
Yes, he does. Please pretending to the current, under the current emergency status, the economic development comport, portion of the NIMS program.
And then I'm not coming back, I promise. And it, it'll, the mayor comments will be over, but I think it's longer than the council meeting. I apologize. But there was a lot of information to go over and I think our residents need to know what we're doing here in the city of Kenner. And I thank my whole team and also this council for doing everything that they did. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to let everyone know that as part of our emergency operations plan for the city of Kenner, one of the annexes of our plans, one of the components of our plans is a recovery coordination group. And part of that recovery coordination group is economic development. And that's to support the National Disaster Recovery Framework, which identifies six, uh, recovery support functions, economic development being part of, part of that. So this is routine for us to do after any type of disaster or during the disaster. In this case, where we meet with the mayor and his administration, we make recommendations from an emergency stand, emergency management standpoint as to what components of our recovery coordination group, we should, uh, activate in order to start addressing some of the issues. The National Disaster Recovery Framework is a very flexible plan. We adopt that, the, the, those principles and we're very adaptable and flexible in how we address recovery. But it is part of our plan and it is something that is done on a continual basis throughout any type of disaster operation.
Yes, sir.
We're done, Glenn.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Item five is acceptance rejection of bids requiring an expenditure of less than $5,000. We have none. Item six is change orders requiring an expenditure of less than $5,000. We have none. Item seven is acceptance of committee findings for final passage. We have none. Item eight is re-subdivision ordinances for final passage. Item eight A is summary ordinance number 12,747. An ordinance approving the plan of re-subdivision of lots eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18, square 113 into lots eight A and 11 A, square 113, Kenner Heights subdivision, Kenner Jefferson Parish, Louisiana. Item eight B is summary ordinance number 12,748. An ordinance approving the plan of re-subdivision of lots 18 through 28 and part of lots one through 13, square 1A into lots A, B, and C, square 1A, Kenner Heights subdivision, Kenner Jefferson Parish, Louisiana. That will conclude the consent agenda, sir.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by Councilmember McKenney to approve the consent agenda. Let's vote by roll call.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan? You're muted.
Sorry, yes.
It's okay. Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenny?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Hey.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item nine, public hearings for final passage. Item nine A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,746. An ordinance granting a construction servitude to the Department of Transportation and Development of the state of Louisiana for the state project number H period 011670, I-10 and the Loyola Interchange Improvement Route I-10, Jefferson Parish, Louisiana.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Brennan, seconded by Councilman Segura to open the public hearing. Council people, let's vote.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman Kenny?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. You're now in a public hearing.
Adam, do we have anybody that would like to speak?
There are currently no hands raised.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Brennan, seconded by Councilman Segura to close the public hearing. Let's vote.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenny?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Hey.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to close your hearing.
We also have a motion by Councilman Brennan, seconded by Councilman Segura to approve.
Mr. Chairman, um, if I could, uh, believe that Councilman Segura has an amendment. Would you like me to read it or would you like to read it, Councilman?
You read it, Madam Clerk. Clerk can read it.
Okay. At the request of Councilmember Segura, um, we would like to amend item nine A to, um, have section two to read as follows, that the proceeds received from this temporary servitude be and are hereby dedicated to the Kenner Police Department's loss fund. And section two will be renumbered as section three and will read that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign such documents as required to execute said servitude.
Councilman Segura, you want to?
If I could get a motion and a second on the amendment to put it on the floor, sir?
Okay. Motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by Councilman Brennan to amend. Council people, let's vote.
No, let's have some discussion on the amendment, sir, and then we can vote.
I know Segura has something to say.
Well, just quickly, thank you, Council President. Um, this was just a, um, it was not noted in the initial legislation to dedicate the money. And as I did last time on the lease of the cell tower, since this piece of land is, um, land that is, is purchased and used by the police department, it's only, uh, fair that they get the proceeds and that, uh, the chief's loss fund certainly, uh, is the place to put it. So, uh, I'm sure he'll agree. Chief, if you have anything you want to add.
That you said it well. I support it and, uh, like this, this money goes into, uh, the police department doesn't get sued. The, you know, the city of Kenner gets sued. And I, as it's been, uh, historically, that we pretty much handle our own, uh, lawsuits and payouts. And this is just, I mean, it's a city loss fund. It's just, it just puts the money aside to dedicate to, uh, anything if we ever pay any lawsuits out.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by.
You got a hand up.
Councilman Wilmot?
Thank, thank you, Council President. Uh, I too support this, of course, but I just wanted to ask the question. Uh, the servitude, how much, uh, funds are we looking at? Does anybody know?
It, it, it should have been in there. It was, it's 13,000, I think.
13,540 dollars for a four-year servitude.
Okay, that's all I have. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Brennan, did you have your hand up?
No, sir.
Anybody else? Any comments?
No one from the public.
All right. Again, we have a motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by Councilman Brennan to amend. Council people, let's vote.
Councilman McKenny?
Councilmember McKenny?
Yay.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Hey.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero on your amendment. Now to approve as amended.
Let's vote.
Your motion was Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Segura. Is that what your motion was?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Hey.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenny?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. We have none. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,749. An ordinance approving an agreement with Tunnel Spangler and Associates Incorporated doing business as TSW for professional services in accordance with RFP 20 dash 6550 in an amount not to exceed $153,000.
We have a motion by Councilman Brennan, seconded by Councilman Segura to approve. Let's vote.
Councilman Carroll?
Hey.
Councilman Segura?
Hey.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenny?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15B is a resolution approving amendment number two to the agreement with Meyer Engineers LTD regarding the Kenner FEMA street renovation project PW 20831 for an increase of $65,355 for the Department of Public Works.
We have a motion by Hayes, seconded by Councilman Brennan to approve.
Council? Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenny?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Hey.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance approving the plan of re-subdivision of lots one, two, three, and seven through 62, square 142, Lincoln Manor subdivision, which lots are owned by the Kenner Housing Authority into new lots 1A, 10A, 20A, and 40A, and approving a plan to unit development to allow the new construction of 10 senior living units on new lot 40A, the construction of a new 32-unit apartment complex and community building on lot 20A, the construction of a new Kenner Housing Authority office building on lot 10A, and the conversion of the, in the existing building into a maintenance building on lot 1A, all in square 142, Lincoln Manor subdivision, Kenner, Louisiana. Item 16B is an order to approve in the plan of re-subdivision of lots 15 through 20 and lots 93 through 98 into lot 98A, square 178, Veteran Heights subdivision, Kenner, Louisiana. Item 16C is an order to accept in the lowest responsive bid received from Consolidated Traffic Controls Incorporated to provide solar power, flashing school zone speed limit signs in accordance with letter bid number 20 dash 1963 in an amount not to exceed $5,400 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16D is an order to accept in the lowest responsive bid received from Polydine Incorporated for a contract to provide polymer on a nas needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 20 dash 6559 in an amount not to exceed $74,175 for the Department of Waste Water. Item 16E is an ordinance adopting a superseding and amending operating budget for the city of Kenner for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending July 30th, 2021 and providing for related matters. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees. Councilman Carroll has.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and Mr. President. I'd like to, uh, take this opportunity to thank the administration for our Zoom meeting as it relates, related to the Buddy Lawson concession. From being a former Buddy Lawson player, uh, the, the old concession, which was there for like 40 years, has been torn down. And we are in the process, have not forgotten for everyone that, you know, that checks on it, that we are moving closer to, to get in that project started from not just tearing down, but actually building the building. So thank everybody for the productive meeting. Uh, within the next month, we should have more information and we'll keep you abreast of that. The second thing is thank the administration again and all the different departments for uh, the conversation and particularly Representative Joe Stagni about the upcoming Lincoln Manor drainage project. That is another project that we're working towards ensuring and improving the drainage capacity, uh, outlet for the Lincoln Manor and all of the surrounding, uh, subdivisions and, and parts of Kenner. Thanks for that. And also thank all the department, recreation, general service, uh, public works for the initial start of the cleanup for the city, the grass, the trees. You know, we have, we have gotten off on a good foot, particularly that I, that I am aware of in District One, Kenner Avenue, Reverend Richard Wilson, we have gotten off to a good foot. So I obviously will be looking at that, working with the directors to ensure that we continue that. There are some things uh, that my administrative assistant, uh, Ms. Harper will be mailing out to everybody just to keep, to keep up what's going on and keep a status of it. But the initial response has, have been great. Uh, we look forward to that, uh, as we move forward to ensuring, uh, the residents of the entire city of Kenner that, uh, we intend to deal with the COVID situation, the challenges, the challenges of our personnel, uh, with the support of contractors and the employees to make sure that our city is looking as pristine as any other city around the state of Louisiana. So thank you guys very much for all the support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilmot?
But thank you, Mr. President. And I just wanted to remind everybody of, especially the public that the 2020 census is coming near an end and it's very, very important for everybody to complete the census. Of course, uh, it, it shows the population and how federal dollars are dispersed to our region. Of course, it'll impact our schools, our buildings, our roads, our bridges. So it's very, very important that everybody, uh, uh, complete the 2020 census. Thank you.
Council members, any other comments?
I just.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. This based on Councilman Wilmot comment, uh, as it relates to the, the census and I'm not sure if Attorney Shaw is on this meeting. Is she, is she there? Here? Attorney Shaw? She's not here, obviously. Well, I just wanted to say that there was a whole, before all of this pandemic stuff kicked off, we, along with Attorney Shaw, had established meetings and guidelines. we, along with Attorney Shaw, had established meetings and guidelines specifically about the census that we were actually going to be part of support, employment, activity for the entire city of Kenner. It kind of got pushed back, obviously, for for obvious reasons. But I think now and I'll have, I will ask Ms. Shaw to go in more detail of the next meeting about some of the virtual stuff, Zoom stuff that we're going to have to do. There were some questions about cutting it off early, the longevity of it. But I think that has been pushed back and it will be able to go forward. Don't don't hold me to that, but I believe that is the case. And Ms. Shaw will be able to expand more on that at our next meeting. So thanks again about that. Thank you, Willmott, for that information update. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, new business?
Yes, sir. Item 18 is new business. Item 18A, at the request of the Finance Department, the clerk will read a public notice regarding the March 20th, 2021 election. This notice is to advise the public that the Kenner City Council intends to vote on resolutions to authorize the calling of special elections for the renewal of the levy and collection of special taxes in the city of Kenner, state of Louisiana. The Kenner City Council will vote on these resolutions at the council meeting to be held Friday, October 16th, 2020, beginning at 11:00 a.m. in the council chambers in the city hall building located at 1801 Williams Boulevard, Kenner, Louisiana, 70062. The tentative date for this election is Saturday, March 20th, 2021.
Again, this is a public notice, is no vote required. However, I think we should point out that on October 16th, we still may be at the Ponchartrain Center.
Yes, and public notice will be posted on the building if the meeting will not be held in the city chamber, city council chambers. We will post it on the board, on the internet, and on the website, notifying the public that the meeting will be held at the Ponchartrain Center. The public notice, March 20, 2021 election. The city, the Kenner City Council intends to vote on resolutions to authorize the calling of special elections for the renewal of the levy and collection of special taxes in the city of Kenner, state of Louisiana, including the following. Item one, the renewal of the levy and collection of a tax not to exceed seven and forty hundredths mils on all property subject to taxation in the city of Kenner for a period of 10 years, beginning with the year 2022 and ending in the year 2031, inclusive with the estimated amount reasonably expected to be collected from the levy of the tax for one year being $4,94,237 for the purpose of constructing, improving, equipping, maintaining, and/or operating fire department buildings and facilities for acquiring, maintaining, and operating fire department vehicles and equipment and paying salaries and benefits of the fire department personnel. Number two, the renewal of the levy and collection of a tax not to exceed one and sixty one hundredth mils on all property subject to taxation in the city for a period of 10 years, beginning with the year 2022 and ending with the year 2031, inclusive with the estimated amount reasonably expected to be collected from the levy of the tax for one year beginning being $890,773 for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving, maintaining, and/or operating garbage collection and disposal facilities and/or services in and for the city, including salaries and benefits of garbage department personnel. And number three, the renewal of the levy and collection of a tax not to exceed one and fourteenth hundreds mils on all property subject to taxation in the city for a period of 10 years, beginning with the year 2022 and ending in the year 2031, inclusive with the estimated amount reasonably expected to be collected from the levy of the tax for one year being $630,733 for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving, maintaining, and/or operating the city's wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal system, including salaries and benefits of the sewage department personnel. The Kenner City Council will vote on these resolutions at the council meeting to be held on Friday, October 16th, 2020, beginning at 11:00 a.m. in the council chambers in the city hall building located at 1801 Williams Boulevard, Kenner, Louisiana, 70062. The tentative date for this election is Saturday, March 20th, 2021. Item 19 is unfinished business on and/or motions to reconsider or remove from a table position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Adam, do we have anybody?
Al Morello is up first.
Go ahead. Al Morello, 4260 East Royal Drive, 5th District, 48 years. First topic, it's about time we go back to our face to face meetings. If the small city of Harahan can have face to face meetings in their chamber, which is about half the size of ours, if we certainly should have been having our face to face meetings a long time ago. Now, I want to talk about this China virus. You know, the the mandates, the decisions, the politically driven decisions that have been made was more deadly to the public than the virus itself. Now, you all might want to want to know why I think like that. Well, you know, when the CDC comes up about two weeks ago on the national news and reports that 6% of the deaths nationwide of were directly related to this virus, whereas 94% had under the people had underlying medical conditions. A lot of them weren't even touched it, but when they passed away, it was from this virus. Okay? Now, people are suffering in our city. People are suffering all over this parish. And that's why I believe that the response and the reaction was more deadly than the virus itself. As far as just caution narrative that you all continue to push, you don't need to go talk to the mainstream population in this city and and push that narrative to the people that are suffering, who's had their businesses taken away, shut down, never to reopen again, people who are no longer able to make a living for their families. And by the way, the rate of death from suicides and from drug overdoses because of this crisis is now outnumbered the deaths from the virus itself. Now, I want to say something that Rahm Emanuel once said years ago, who was the former chief of staff in the Obama administration and the former mayor of Chicago. He said it all when he said, never let a good crisis go to waste. Now, no one is saying that the virus is not real. We all know the whole story about this virus. And no one is saying that one night is one too many. But this is, this is where the kind job comes in. The kind job comes in with the politics at play in this in this crisis and the political agenda that's being pushed. That's where the kind job comes in. Now, anybody got any comments, any questions for me? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Adam?
I see no other hands raised, Councilman. Mister, there you go. Some council members have
And I'm going to default to Councilman Carroll. I think you know what he's going to mention and if he doesn't, I will later. Thank you.
Councilman Carroll?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Willmott. I'm not sure. I I I mentioned some information about the census and I wanted to ensure that I clear some things up. And I I think Ms. Attorney Shaw is back on the line and I would like her to help me out to clear up everything that I, anything that I said, to clear it up and to expand on some of the things that we had in place just to ensure the people, we have done our due diligence on behalf of the city and the administration. So Attorney Shaw, are you available to speak now?
Yes, Councilman. Thank you for allowing me to speak on it. Before the pandemic, we were working directly with the census to go to public meetings to inform people about the importance of the census and to sign up. In one of the previous press conferences by the governor, he said that Louisiana had the lowest response rate for the census. This impacts our ability to receive funding from FEMA to HUD to all funding that comes in federally. So it's important that everyone goes online to 2020census.gov, 2020census.gov to respond. The last day to respond is September 30th. And then they're going to start doing the calculation so they can have it ready by 2021. So the last day to respond is September 30th at 2020census.gov. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Thanks for cleaning up some of my stuff. So thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion.
Thank you.